Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, everybody. Um, just as a courtesy we're letting everyone know that this meeting is being taped, it's being focused here and in the podium. Nobody in the audience.
You can see me on it.
I can see you on it. I saw you on the line. Uh, Ms. Wilson, one of both of them?
Right.
Mrs. Ogles, present.
Mr. Almaranda?
Present.
Mr. Perioli?
Here.
Mrs. Kennedy?
Present.
Mrs. Adams?
Present.
Mr. Uchich?
Present.
Mrs. Donnelly?
Present.
Mrs. Bensley?
Present.
Mr. Millman?
Sorry.
And we have Ian Burrow, who's present. We're not even out the gate yet.
I didn't.
Well, I'm just still.
Okay, before we go further, I have something to read that was from your attorney's. It has come to my attention that there is a questioning of the board's calling a properly convened executive session for discussion of the board member of the vacancy. The board at its February 9 meeting discussed in public the issue of filling the seat. The board's attorney read to the public the board's options: leave the seat vacant until the election in May, appoint a member to fill the seat until the end of the term, June 30th, or have the GOSI superintendent appoint a member to the vacated seat. The board, after a public discussion, decided to accept applications for the open seat for appointment. But without a decision as to whether this course of action will be taken, the board did not determine that the vacancy would be filled by appointment, only that they would take into consideration the applicant and then make a decision in public as to the course of action. With regard to Mr. Freeman's opinions written for the Committee on Open Government, it is clearly stated that the board may convene executive session for the following reasons: pursuant to the Open Meetings Law, Section 105, a public body such as the Connect Quad Board of Education may conduct an executive session for a number of purposes, including to discuss the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, appointment, demotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. The Committee on Open Government has applied that under Section 105, 1F, had a discussion focusing on the individual candidates that validly be considered in an executive session because it would be involved in a matter leading to the appointment of a particular person. In addition, a discussion regarding the employment history of an individual is a proper subject for executive session. More interviews of each candidate may also be done in executive session. The Open Meetings Law intermissive meaning the board does not have to enter into executive session to discuss the appointment of an individual to the board. They, however, must be careful that in discussing an applicant in public, allegations of slander and invasion of personal privacy are not implicated during the conversation. For these reasons, the board has opted to discuss the individual applicant's qualifications in executive session as their right under the Open Meetings Law. Any person applying for the appointment would believe that the matter would be conducted with confidentiality, whether it for a public employee as well as an employee in the private sector. With reference to the Open Meetings Online on the boarding case, the court determined that the databases by the village board entering its executive session was not appropriate. In other words, the board entered an executive session for the purpose of discussing a personal issue as opposed to discussing the employment history of a particular person or discussing matters leading up to the appointment of a particular person. The court held that the discussion of a personal issue does not satisfy the requirements of the Public Offices Law, Section 105, 1F. The statute itself requires with respect to personnel matters that the discussion involve the employment history of a particular person. The court also found that the board improperly considered whether to create a full-time position and the resulting fiscal impact while in executive session. In the court's view, such a discussion went beyond permissible bounds of Public Offices Law, Section 105, 1F. It should also be noted that the Education Law permits the board to appoint a board member when a board member resigns. Whether that authority exists in the board case was not clear. Furthermore, an online receipt today by myself from Mr. Freeman in which he directly quotes my previous explanation from our attorney, Section 105, 1F of the Open Meeting Law permits a board to discuss matters leading to the appointment of a particular person during executive session. However, and the only judicial decision of which I'm aware that involved filing a vacancy in elective office, it is held that the discussion related to that process will subvert her in public. Mr. Freeman went on to include the same online on the boarding case as previously explained. Therefore, let me be clear, this board did not violate the Open Meetings Law to discuss the board vacancy. The discussion of how to proceed regarding the seat vacancy was done in public on February 9. However, the board entered its executive session today under Open Meetings Law, Section 105, 1F, to review the candidate applications for a possible appointment. During Discussion Items, Section Agenda, the board will again discuss the board vacancy and whether to proceed with an appointment or to leave the seat vacant. Okay, so now we're moving on to... A minute. I need a motion in a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're moving over to student government. I guess it's just you, Ms. Hughes.
Yes. So first, I'd like to thank you, Ms. Ogles, for coming to hear our speech. Hope you enjoyed it.
Thank you very much.
A lot of the students also enjoyed it. We got a lot of positive feedback from it. And then we have on Friday at the high school, Marina's big give back event. And it's going to be a Chinese auction that begins at 6 o'clock. And then we're holding a blood drive at the high school on March 3. And the student government was asked to hold Duffield's fundraiser for students in need with cancer. They're having a lip sync battle. And then there have been collections for both the junior crews and the part for sophomore trip to Jordy Park. They happen this weekend. They're both attached to the campus. Junior crews? I think it's around May 20th.
What is the event for Marina?
Um, they're going to have a Chinese auction. Marina, she's a student in our school. She's in 10th grade, I believe, and she has cancer. And she started a whole, uh, Make-A-Wish. She wanted to do it for herself and for everyone. And started a Chinese auction, and a lot of people in the community have donated baskets. It's happening this Friday.
This Friday at the high school?
Yeah.
What time at the high school?
6:00.
6:00.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. If you'd like to stay, if you'd like to leave.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll move over to policy. I need a motion in a second.
One second.
Okay, um, we have school district records, NISB sample policy, NISB sample policy, uh, 600, and NISB policy 8121. Uh, Maguire, Nick, or Lee, like to speak a little depth to that?
Um, there were all things that came down from there, and some of them are outdated. So we have to work with them. Significant, little significant changes. Some of them are just wording changes. And this is actually included in there, so we have a close adjustment.
Great. You only want to know how is the employee overdose prevention policy because in order for us to... 8121?
It's the, uh, it's the...
Oh, the life...
8121.
You want to talk about it?
No.
Uh, in order for us to be able to, um, be part of the Southern, the Southern Peace Department's program for Narcan distribution, if we want that someone in the building was suffering from an overdose, we need to put this into policy. And, um, we're just, we pull our, uh, there's these security guards. Many of our coaches have been trained in Narcan use, uh, in case someone was overdosing. It's a lifesaver. It's absolutely miraculous. Um, and we're part of the Southern Department, the Southern County Department, uh, Peace Department. And we need that policy to help you can actually utilize it in the neighborhood. So if that was necessary. Thank you. A question. Motion on the table? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is anything under advisement?
Yes.
Okay, we have testing programs, um...
Motion.
Second?
Still.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we have, moving on to discussion items, uh... Hold this.
We're taking... We're in a discussion.
That's two cases. Okay. So we have items two through six. First, uh, item three, board vacancy.
Can you turn your microphones on? We can't hear you in the back.
Uh, E. G. O. C.'s vote, nomination of the candidate, capital reserve fund, the 2016-17 enrollment staffing programs, and the 2016-2017 epidemic calendar. I'll take a motion, and then it's open discussion.
One second.
The board has gone to consensus that we are going to interview the six applicants and put their letters of intent. Uh, we're going to hopefully have a, uh, a meeting on Monday to interview the six candidates that came forward, uh, with their letters of intent. So that's where we are right now with our vacancies. So, uh, that's where we stand right now. Monday, 7:00 PM, we're starting to give the standing answers for the board vacancy. That will be done in the executive session. Okay, moving on to the nomination of the candidate for E. G. O. C.'s. Anybody on the board interested in, uh, winning? Whether the public engine, the public office, they can apply this to...
I can't at this time. I know that you asked me to, Linda, but I can't. Not, not at this time. I did. Look.
So anybody about to advocate, if someone to take this position, or be a cheerleader? Oh, no, no way. It's actually really fun for it to be part of. Uh, they're really very interested in helping all it's, it's Southern County. So it's something that, you know, but it's more time. What are you talking about for us? Two more meetings, more meetings on Wednesday, at least, you know. And then one of our... They need, they need to, you need to hear, you know, if one of our board members wanted to be part of it, so. Yeah, my son and my daughter would love you very much. It's okay. We've never had someone on the board before in Connect Quad be that. You know, it's the first time that we have to have them. So some other needs to be...
Will you be keeping, um, the position open for a possible future?
It's, it's not us. It's the Southern GOSIs. So it, that, it has to be someone that's in the ISOPLUSTER.
And when do they have to be nominated by?
It has to be...
I guess that was my question.
No leaving until Friday, March 18th. The nominee must be transmitted to the Office of the Clerk of the Southern GOSIs, First Advisory District of Southern County. No leaving until March 18th, 2016. So we have one more board meeting. Our board really needs to nominate that person. So if there's someone that's a community resident that would be interested in serving on that board, that would be wonderful to have a Connect Quad voice on that board. But it, the seat will be occupied by someone who's in the ISOPLUSTER districts. That will be, you know, the seat will be nominated by one of those school districts. There may be multiple nominations, and then there will be a vote on, uh, March, on April, April 19th. So if we have one more board meeting, if someone is interested in coming, we're going to talk to the board about it.
So you'll leave it on the agenda for next week?
We'll put it on the agenda next week. Okay, uh, Ms. Donnelly, do you want to put your name first?
Yes. I wanted to just go over, um, before the board gives its, uh, hopefully its authorization for the capital reserve establishment to go on the May ballot. I just wanted to go over what the capital reserve is, uh, what a reserve is. A reserve's a way to save money. A piggy bank set aside money for a particular purpose. The reasons to save for, um, a future event are to prevent spikes in the annual budget and in the property tax levy, and to plan, uh, for future needs that we know will come up. We know we have capital needs. It's just like maintaining your home. You know when a roof is reaching its life expectancy, or when a boiler is reaching its life expectancy. We have the same issues with our buildings. A capital reserve is a special kind of reserve. There are reserves that are established, and they're always for a particular purpose, which is stated. But a capital reserve has an additional requirement, that being that it needs voter approval. Um, and it, but in particular, what we would be setting money aside for out of surplus funds, if any, at year-end, are equipment purchases and capital improvements. Some of the things I just mentioned, um, to prepare and keep our buildings in good condition from major expenditures. Not maintenance, but major improvements. Uh, Mr. Allen, last, uh, board meeting went over building by building. Just some of the things, it's not a final list, but some things that we know already that have come to our attention, that we would need to be thinking about for a capital project, which wouldn't go into effect for years down the road from now. We're just at the point now of establishing a savings account. Not even putting money in yet, but just saying, yes, it's okay to set one up. So there are needs at every building, which is how it should be. Everybody should benefit from a capital project. And every building will always have needs. So I'm just going quickly through these because they were discussed at the last board meeting. And this presentation will be up on the website if you want to see, um, all the detail. So as I mentioned, we need voter approval to establish this savings vehicle, this capital reserve. Um, there are some legal requirements of the reserve. You have to state what the reserve is for. Um, it's a very broad description so as to encompass a scope of work that embodies things that the facilities team, the capital projects team, would, um, would become aware of as it fine-tuned the scope. So, um, you know, you see roofing, um, abatement, reconstruction, renovation, um, things of that nature. A, a second requirement is you have to establish, what is the maximum amount that you're allowed to save over the years? What is the, the grand total, the aggregate? And that's 9.5 million. In past years, we have typically had a $7 million reserve. Um, and that gives you the ability to have a project of about $20 million because our, our building aid ratio is such that for every dollar we spend, we get back about 67 cents. That varies a bit because not all expenses are allowable, so we like to say maybe 50, 55% to be more conservative. You have to also establish the probable term, which the proposition we're asking for authorization from the board for is that it should not exceed 10 years. And the source of the funds is not additional taxation, but it is current and future end-of-year budget surplus, if any, and other funds that may be legally appropriated. Um, and then that money is accounted for, and any interest that it earns is allocated to it. So that, that stays with that principal amount, and it adds to the principal amount. So this is just, you know, a lot of fine print of what was bigger on this slide. Setting forth the purpose. So the idea tonight is that we're asking the board for the May 17 ballot to not only have Proposition 1, where, where in the, um, amount of the budget is set forth and the public votes on the budget, the yes or no, that they're approving the budget, but also a second proposition to establish the reserve. Not to fund it yet, but to establish it. Doing it this way, we don't have a separate vote. We don't incur the additional expenses of a second vote. The funding comes about via board authorization after considering if there are surplus funds at year-end this year and future years. Um, and then additionally, when it's time to expend, we would also have to go to the public and get voter approval to expend. This is just the detailed process of what will happen years down the road after the savings bank is at the point where we're ready to, um, go out for a capital project and apply that savings account to a borrowing, um, and all of the capital work, not all, but, um, there would be building aid on the underlying projects. So there's a committee that's put in place to, um, provide a more detailed scope of work. They'll consider not only the things that facilities brought to our attention last week and are summarized in the earlier slides, but also the building condition survey, which is underway now, um, the annual vision, visual inspections from then till now, input from, um, principals, the architects. There's a whole team that will fine-tune the scope. Um, then we go for board approval of the project, and the project is underway. But at this point, we're not even on this list of the process yet. And here's a visual of, um, a flow chart of how the whole, how a capital project runs from start to finish. So we're, we're back here. We're determining that there's a need to start planning ahead for, for a project. We might even be a little, we might not be on the, on the screen yet. So we're just at the point where we're planning and saying, we know that we need to maintain our buildings. We know that there are some buildings that need boilers. We know there's a baiting work that needs to be done. We should start to, um, establish a vehicle to save that. And that's all I have.
And summarize it as a nominee?
Oh, please.
Okay. There's no additional tax, uh, communities not to be taxed. This again. If we didn't do this, we would have to fund it in our local budget because we would spend some of it. We would be getting our money back. 60%, 55% back. So what I'm hearing, by doing this and approving this, it's money that we already have. And we're setting it aside for future projects so we can get a lot of money back. Is that what you just said?
It, it is. It's, it's planning for the future, to go out for a project, and we will get building aid back on this one.
And it's not new money. It's money that we already have.
It's not in result of additional taxation, though.
The essential voters, you need to register.
Separate majority.
We're just asking to establish.
Right, we're left.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 no. We're just, we're going up the savings. Right. Thank you, Sharon.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We have an analysis and projections of enrollment for next year. Based on this year's October enrollment, that's the benchmark that the state uses. Annual, you know, fluctuates up and down. We have it for you by building, and on the elementary level, we also have the average class sizes for you and the number of sections. I'm happy to report at this moment, we don't anticipate any change in the number of sections. The net change will be zero, although there will be changes within and in all of the various buildings based on shifts in enrollment on people at grade levels. So let's start with Bostie. Um, if you take a look at it, what we anticipate is one additional first grade and subtraction one second grade. We have an important caveat, though. You notice on the bottom, we say the third section of kindergarten may be reduced. Why do we say that? The 58 that you see this year, we're not sure if that's a one-year anomaly or an indication of the trend. And when we discussed the possibility of the business office and the superintendent, we decided at this point it's better to plan so that we can subtract rather than have to add to the budget at a later date. So at this point, we are projecting, uh, no change at all in the number of sections at Bostie. You notice the class size, and you'll see this throughout, they are very, very healthy. And we'll show you the aggregate at the end of the elementary presentation. Cherokee, uh, the same thing is true. You'll notice that we had a very large, uh, kindergarten class this year. We don't know, again, if that's a one-year phenomenon or an indication of a trend. But we budgeted for five sections next year. If the numbers are lower, we can always reduce it back to four. Duffield, we're subtracting one section of second grade, but you still have a very, very healthy 18.7 class size for that. Idle Hour, we're subtracting a third and adding a fourth. And again, the class sizes, you can see throughout, are very, very healthy. Pearl, because of decrease, we are subtracting one section of grade three. And again, the class size is, is, is not too terrible. Slocum, we're adding a section of fifth grade, and again, the class size is, is not excessively large at all. Sycamore, no change whatsoever. We're projecting that we'll have the same number of sections, which will be 18. When you put it all together, we're subtracting two sections of grade, uh, adding two sections of grade one, subtracting two sections of grade two and three, adding one fourth grade and one fifth grade for a net change of zeros in the game previous section.
Is this, will this be online, Bob? It will be? Thank you.
Um, take a look at the class sizes. They are exceptionally good throughout. Going to the middle school, this building has the largest drop this required of 54. How did we come upon the enrollment? What we did is we took the fifth grade in each of the feeder schools for that building and pushed it into grade six. Uh, the, where you have the biggest change is you notice grade eight is going from 265 to 214. And that accounts for the drop. Mr. Millman and I will be meeting with the building administrators at both the middle schools and the high schools to talk about specifics. You can't plan the same way you can with the elementary school in terms of the number of sections. As you know, you have to go by content area, and we'll be talking about that in a moment. Uh, slight drop at Roncockama, minus 18. Again, here it's grade seven, 246 to 214. That's the biggest drop. When we get to the high school, you actually see a very modest increase, a difference of plus seven. So we can say that the high school enrollment is virtually unchanged at this point. Looking at it in the aggregate, you can see where we're gaining enrollment and where we project a subtraction. You notice at the bottom, we expect to go from 6016 to 5966 total enrollment, minus 94. That may seem like a lot, but it's a lot better than the drops you can see in previous years. The last four or five years, we've been averaging a drop of about 120 students. So we think the, the decrease in enrollment may be adding it at this point. Savings. We do have some potential savings from retirements. We have a number of people who have indicated that they will be retiring by July 1st or sometime between July 1st and next June 30th. Uh, rather than give you names, we're putting salaries down for each of these people. This is salary that the person's making. This is the replacement salary. And this is the corresponding savings. Where you see the numbers in red font, that's someone who is going to be leaving during the course of the year. So we had to prorate the savings. So for example, someone leaving next January, we, we don't get a full year's savings on that, so we gave it a total amount. Uh, for the non-instructional staff, we expect the total aggregate savings to be $220,000. When you get from the retirements for, uh, teaching staff, we project probably... When you get from the retirements for teaching staff, we project probably four in the areas of art, English, phys ed, and social studies. Again, current salary, replacement salary, when we budget, we budget at master's one just to be sure. Person might come in with a bachelor's degree, which will be even more savings, but for budgeting purposes, we're going to master's one. This is the difference at the savings to the district. When you put them all together, 244,000. When you combine both, it's 464,190. However, if we take each of these four positions and do not replace them, we will have further savings of an additional $227,000. So that's what the picture looks like at this point.
Can you repeat that last thing that you said, Bob? 227?
Yes. We're projecting that all four teachers will be replaced. If, for example, we decide with the phys ed vacancy that we can cover the person's departure with existing staff due to the increase in enrollment, then we're saving additional money.
And is that including benefits or that's just salary?
Just salary.
Are there any candidates? Can we move on to four or just four?
You never know. These are the ones that were fairly certain, but at this point, you never know what will happen between now and June, there's always potential for drop.
So potentially, all the items, the three items, it lists, which includes 227, that's over a million dollars.
It's substantial.
Any other things that you had mentioned, staffing, non-staffing and staffing, is that also inclusive of the benefits or that's an addition?
No, that's just salary.
So, okay.
Benefits are included.
Okay.
As we transition in from staffing, we go into programs and from the curriculum instructional. One of the things that I did is I set a program up so that you could see the initiatives that we started this year, which, many of which will be continuing on to next year, and then simultaneously, I added what some of the areas of focus are. These are highlights. We have thousands of things going on, work is going on every single day, but we wanted to touch on a couple of areas that we know are our high priorities for our district. So I broke it up into three different areas, curriculum and instruction, instructional technology, and staffing. Some of the continuing initiatives that we started this year was professional development. We provided outside opportunities for many of our staff and administrators to participate in. As of this point, we have 165 staff members that have bailed themselves to these outside professional development opportunities compared to a total last year of 191, and we're only midway through the year, so we're pretty excited that people are taking advantage of that. In addition to that, the benefit in the level of collegiality at the department meetings, teachers coming back excited, sharing what they're learning and helping the department grow in totality. In addition to that, we started new teacher workshops. We have had six to date, they're going extremely well. We have myself, Ms. Manzi, Ms. Adams, Mary Losing, and in Abraham, Ms. Hanaway, and a couple other administrators who are presenting, giving ideas. We have topics that go all the way and provide opportunities for them to dialogue with each other and dialogue with us as well. For next year, we're looking to continue the outside support and looking to continue to promote the outside learning opportunities for our staff and for our administrators to take advantage of those professional development opportunities. With regards to our academies, which is something we discussed last year, we have done extensive research over the past year about what academies, what it takes to actually get an academy up and running, what are the financial responsibilities, the program costs, and the staffing needs. We did an extensive course evaluation to see what academies we could put together, and the goal for us is to create academies and opportunities for our students, not creating expenses for the district. So looking at our electives that are not connected and connecting all of those electives to provide an opportunity so that students can have a different pathway through graduation. In addition to that, we did a student survey to find out what our students are interested in, what areas we want to promote, and based upon that, we have some ideas moving forward. What I would like to do is have Dr. Losing come in with Mr. Frank, our science chairperson and our director of social studies and business, to speak about some of the work that they have done this year and talk about some of their plans for next year and a more of a detailed vision for that.
So you could hold with the top three, you wanted to agree?
Yeah, I'll get to that in a little bit for. So for the 16, 17 school year, we're very proud to announce our inaugural Business Academy will start. We have, will be having a cohort of about 50 students. Those students will be co-horted for multiple periods throughout the day, so they'll stay together and work together. And we have tied courses together so that the work that they're doing in the virtual enterprise course will carry over to their English course as well, and they'll be building their skills in their English courses as well.
And what grade levels does that start, ninth grade?
It starts, students start preparing for that in ninth and 10th grade, and the culmination is in senior year.
So the kids that are eighth grade currently going to ninth grade, are they aware of these particular items?
That's what I want Mr. Frank and Dr. Losing to talk about, is some of their plans for promotion, some of their plans for how we can evaluate the program and continually assess it, what are some part needs to be made there. We're also very excited because we are in the process of receiving CTE approval from New York State for the student's diploma. There is a test that's involved in that, and we're preparing students for that assessment at the end of their senior year. And we are beginning the planning stages for the top three of our survey, which is a medical academy, a STEM academy, and a cosmetology academy. And again, Dr. Losing and Mr. Frank will come in and provide more detail as we move forward with that. Again, one of the exciting things about this is we're able to enhance the program without additional cost in the district. In the area of literacy, this year we created something that has worked incredibly well. One of the things that we want to work on is honoring the voices of our teachers and providing opportunities for them to dialogue with us and provide feedback. We created a district literacy team. We have two representatives from each of our elementary schools, one from the K-2 area and one from the grades three through five, and they meet with us periodically, discuss items around literacy instruction and what our goals are. We created a professional development opportunity for both the literacy team, our district reading teachers, and our administrators. And the goal of that was to create an opportunity for us to center ourselves about what we connect, what identify as what our needs are. What are the things that we find are non-negotiables that should take place during literacy instruction? What is the type of the methodology of instruction that we want to have for our students in every elementary class across the district? It was a great dialogue, a great experience, opportunities for teachers who have never met each other to talk about their practice and to talk about their philosophy. We have done some small pilots and some samples based around a workshop model for readers and writers workshop. We use Lucy Corkins' units of study and another program called BE Core Ready. In addition to that, the sixth and seventh grade teachers, we have written units of study focused around our writing instruction. We're two years in for grade six. We are in our, starting our first year in grade seven, and you'll see on the other side that we're very excited to be starting into grade eight. So real focus on our writing instruction from K-8 will really prepare our students to be college and career ready as they move into the high school. In addition to that, one of the things we're proud of, and you'll see this theme throughout the presentation, is the leadership of our district administrators in providing in-district professional development opportunities for our teachers. So yes, it's important for them to go out to conferences, but it's also important that they get together as a group and that we have professionals on staff who can lead those kinds of discussions and learning opportunities. The goal for this year was focusing on the high school and the 9th, 12th, and the LA alignment. For next year...
Can I ask you a question before you?
You're going to throw me off.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, teacher Lucy Corkins, is that under teacher college?
So Teachers College is a program, Lucy Corkins is one of the authors of those units of study. She has gone out on her own and there are, she has created something called units of study, both reading and writing, that are aligned to the new standards.
So is it taken Teachers College and moving it?
It is aligning it to the new standards better at a much more significantly reduced cost. When you invest in Teachers College, it's a tremendous amount of professional development through them, and there is a tremendous amount of cost that is associated with that. What units of study does is, and this is something that hasn't been discussed in our committee, is, you know, do we create our own units of study? Do we model ourselves after a program that is research-based? And right now, we're going through those discussions with our staff.
And what school was that piloted, Lucy Corkins?
The Lucy Corkins was piloted at Sycamore and in Pearl.
And what was the response of the faculty for the program?
We have some really good staff developers that are working with us, and they're also, part of this process, you'll notice on the areas of focus is, one of the things that the district literacy team will do will be identify professional developers who will work with us and fit into our district. We currently have two that are working in our district right now that have received very favorable reviews from all teachers and administrative staff. They are currently working with our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade teachers. So to have that continuum of conversation, that common language, we're really excited about it. We feel that these two people will be able to provide a tremendous amount of support for our staff as we move forward.
So currently, to the new school, what is that branch out to the remaining elementary schools?
We have another school who is using BE Core Ready, we have another school who is using another program, and right now, we're collecting all of that data, so the district team is going through that, and they are in the process of putting together the pilots for next year, and those pilots will be district required.
So, okay, so you're going to combine the two and take the best out of it, and that will be ready for...
Those were just samples of ones that we've looked at already, but we are looking for ones that meet, you know, what do you use as one? The philosophical piece behind it, the methodology of instruction, and the structure of the setting, that's what we're really focusing on. So we could either write our own units of study, or we could adopt something that is already done for us.
So are we going to be consistent in the elementaries for next year, so everybody's on the same page?
We're going to work towards consistency, and I think by the middle of next year, we should be deciding on where we are, and moving towards a more formalized approach, K through five and everything.
So whether you're Bostie or Duffield or Sycamore, it will be at the same?
Common experience.
Can I throw one question?
I could go on for days, so this is kind of...
No, this would be quick.
I'm glad you all came out for this.
Writer's workshop, now it's been two years that we've been into this. Have you noticed a difference, a big difference in the writings of those of these kids?
Yeah, maybe that's one thing I can have, I can have Ms. Poppy come in and share some samples. We have some amazing work that is being done in our middle schools, and to see the level at which kids are writing, and not, you know, all levels of kids. So we have our, you know, our special needs children all the way up to our advanced children, and the way we're pushing them as writers is pretty amazing, so we'll bring in some samples and share with you.
I think that's cool, something that's...
And we're getting feedback from our ninth grade teachers to say that, you know, that kids are coming in with skills that they're in seventh grade.
So that'll be, so the ninth graders are coming in, will they also see a bigger difference than what they're seeing now?
No, because theoretically, the eighth graders are the ones that'll have three years of writing workshop in this school. All right. For our focuses for next year, again, the district-wide pilots, again, decided by our literacy team, professional development, the goal of the literacy team is identifying two professional developers that'll work with our district, and the importance of having that commonality is that common language, so that everybody hears the same message and we can provide that commonality across classrooms as well. We're again, working into the eighth grade with our writers workshop and our units of study, and we're really excited about that. We could be probably one of the only middle schools on Long Island that are doing the workshop model of both seventh and eighth grade, so it's exciting. We're investigating in-district literacy coaches. What we're finding is that, you know, teachers are needing support continuously as we move through different initiatives, and we're looking to see if we have people on staff who could be able to provide that support, and I'll talk a little bit about the funding source for that later on. Again, Ms. Poppy will be leading in house professional development, we're looking to vertically align grade six through 12, and again, to increase our focus in non-fiction text for grade six through 12 as well. Mathematics, which is always an interesting discussion. Over the past year or two, we have been working with the New York State modules, we have created a large project over this past summer rewriting the modules. It's not perfect, all right, it's a work in progress. One of the things I'm most proud about is the work that our teachers have done and the investment that they have put into this. I think they see the value of the work that they've done, and they see the value in the experience for children. We've created feedback loops, and that's the important thing, is to create that congoing, constant dialogue, so that we're getting feedback from our teachers about what's working and what's not working. And we've done that at different grade levels throughout the year. They meet with our elementary STEM chairperson, small groups of teachers, talking about what's working, what's not working, things that they can add as we move forward into the summer project. We also changed our embedded, our professional development model. Last year, we did a pull-out model where everybody was pulled out of the building. And obviously, the professional development is really important, but the loss of instructional time is something that is also very critical, is something we need to be cognizant about. We recently hired someone who is able to push into classrooms and work with teachers on a smaller basis. The great thing about this is that we're maintaining the culture of the grade level and maintaining the culture of the building. And, you know, for those of you who know schools, every grade level is different, every teacher is different, and every building is different. And what we're doing is we're working in small groups, so we're pulling third grade from one building to work with each other, fifth grade from another building to work with each other. We're going through all of the grades so that they have the experience of working with this type of development. They can model lessons, brainstorm ideas, talk about timing, talk about methodology, and it's, the feedback so far has been very positive.
Can I ask a question?
You'll be there until...
Sorry.
I have 18 more slides left.
I thought you said, I thought you were going to point. Looking at the mastery levels last year, in particular trig, what are we doing to help those children?
Turn the microphones up?
Yeah, so...
Why Tony's on...
So we have been working, Mary Losing has been working with, in district professional development with our secondary staff. They have been working, they worked this summer, and they have been working multiple times this whole year together, planning and preparing for the Algebra II. One of the things that we did make a commitment to as a district is going with the Algebra II Common Core example. And I met the entire math department earlier in the year to, you know, tell them our plan, the work that they have done, we're very proud of, and to stand behind them and support them in the instructional movement.
Well, that shows, I guess it has to be a anomaly because across Long Island, those trig numbers are down across the board.
My hope is that we will see significant increase this year, similar to what we saw in the integrated algebra. In addition to that, we instituted math specialists for targeted intervention. With that, we did, we used a research-based program called Do the Math Now. It is a really amazing program, we're seeing great gains in some of our students that are utilizing the program. And again, it's our most needy students who are using this, working with our math specialists at each of the buildings. Some of the buildings have split staff, and we'll talk a little bit about that and what the impact of the rate of service is on those split staff. For 2016, 2017, we're looking to do something similar that we did with our literacy team because we've seen some great results. Again, it's developing that district-wide mathematics team, looking at a complete review of all of our resources, both online and in the hands of our teachers and students. We want to increase the online and in-person parent support. That project has already started with our math director, Rob DeSeo, who is working on putting together online resources and support for parents that will be available and accessible to them, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as it starts to become more finalized. In addition to that, we started something that has worked really well at our elementary level, is we've created a shared drive, and that shared drive allows us to be able to share all the resources across the grade levels. We're looking to expand that, not just from K-5, but into grade six to eight and nine through 12. Again, we'd like to continue the embedded professional development, having someone come in and work hands-on with our teachers, maintaining those grade-level relationships. We want to expand that into the middle school next year. And finally, Rob DeSeo, who is our director of mathematics, will continue and lead our in-district professional development opportunities for our staff. I have only like 15 more sections to go through, so. Social studies, we were very excited this year. Brian Frank, our director of social studies, was able to bring in SG Grant, who is the author of the new social studies framework. We did a... We did a long review of our resources and our curriculum alignment, K through 12 for the social studies. We implemented the second year of the county social studies curriculum for grades K through 5. That curriculum is very much aligned to the framework. And we were a little bit ahead of everybody else because of that implementation. It gives us a leg up as we start to move towards the framework. Our teachers are familiar with that type of instructional model, and we feel that it's a great benefit to our students. Mr. Frank and Ms. Abraham led in district workshops for grades K through 5, as well as nine through 12. In social studies, one of the things during the resource review, we identified the fact that we definitely need a resource for our students in grades 3 through 5 as we're currently investigating different texts available for students, grade 3 through 5. And we'll be putting together a committee of teachers to evaluate those texts and have those available, hopefully, July 1st, or mid-July. In addition, we'll be designing units of study in grades K through 12 based upon the new social studies framework, the inquiry model. And our teachers have already started that work at this time. In the area of STEM, all of our elementary schools participated in the hour code. It's a first edition for us this year. We're very excited about it. The feedback we received from the students and from the instructional staff was amazing. In addition, we are using in-house field trips. One of them was, I can't really reach right now. One focused on being an environmental engineer and working on recycling projects. The second was being an electrical engineer and working on circuitry electricity. In addition to that, we started a robotics class at the high school. We currently have 16 students enrolled. Feedback has been good. The robot that they are building, I think, is almost finished. So maybe we'll have them bring it in and try it around for us. In addition, English is a new language. It used to be called PSL. Last year, we hired additional staff to be compliant with Part 154. We've provided ongoing professional development for our staff, both our E&amp;L staff and our general education teachers in the co-teaching model, because with regards to the changes in the regulations, not only students will receive services outside of the classroom, but they will also receive services while they're in the classroom, similar to a special ed, an H grade for teaching model. And Denise Hanaway, our director of load and E&amp;L, has been providing those in-district professional development periodically throughout the year. Sorry. STEM for our area of focus next year is we're looking at outdoor classrooms in kindergarten. We have several districts around us that have provided outdoor classroom experience for their students. Where students in kindergarten go out, they explore the environment, they work with different items, they measure, they gather, they analyze, and they write about. And we're looking to see if we can put that into some of our elementary schools. In addition to that, we're investigating the STEM Academy here at Connect Quad High School.
What are we doing on the middle school level?
Middle school level, we're going to evaluate our technology program. And some of that we have started already, our technology lab, as well as our standardized. In E&amp;L, we're going to continue the special development. One of the things that Ms. Hanaway has been talking about this past year and evaluating is bringing our E&amp;L students back to their home school. And we'll be looking to see if we can create a model that will provide a transition. Because currently, the model that we use is students go to A school for the E&amp;L instruction. And what we want to try to do is bring them back to their home school, create that sense of community for them, allow them to have that same experience if they travel for their elementary year to middle school. At the high school, we have six courses that, yeah, six courses that we will be offering next year. Social media marketing, instruction athletic training, which we're very excited about. We have, one of our, our athletic trainer is a district employee, and he will be teaching athletic training courses at the high school. The goal of that, again, is to build into that medical academy and other opportunity for students who are interested in sports medicine. We have ideas and plans of creating a club, and creating student trainers, and really creating a robust program for students who are interested in sports medicine. We have topics in computer science, research and investigations in astronomy, instruction anthropology, and 3D design and printing, which we're also very excited about. One of the programs that I talked about last year, and because of the new administration, we really couldn't get an opportunity to get involved around, is the futuring project for our high school. And what that will do, it'll allow us to evaluate every section, every course that we offer in our high school, prepare it to surrounding districts that are like districts to us, but also look at those districts that we aspire to be like. And see what they're offering their students. Sometimes it's tweaking course titles, sometimes it's saying, look, we have a lower moment in this course, and redirecting those funds to a different area. And it's a really exciting process, but what it does for us, especially for the budgeting process, it gives us a five-year plan. So we can evaluate what we currently offer and then develop a five-year plan, knowing where we're building our high school to and what opportunities we'll want to give our students.
So eventually, with like criminal justice, will we be something that's...
In the area of science, new science standards have been introduced. We anticipate it should take about two years for them to be rolled out the right way, unlike some other things that have been rolled out in the past. They've received a lot of feedback from the field, a lot of teachers have provided feedback, and they're slowly implementing and rolling those out so that we can make a good transition into different standards for science. And what we're starting to do, Dr. Mary Losing, we're very fortunate, she's our chairperson for science. She has been on the state team, who has been evaluating and working with the state in developing these new standards. So we have firsthand knowledge of what's happening, and she's been bringing that back for our staff. And we're starting to actually work on units of study now in certain areas in preparation for this. Similar to the social studies framework, it is based upon an inquiry model, which we're excited about. And we can really add, especially on the elementary and middle school level, appropriate text, non-fiction text to both of those areas. It really enhance for our students to do. Okay, instructional technology. Some of the initiatives we have started this year and almost finished, we have, we finished our wireless project in all of our elementary schools. So our, every building is completely wireless. We're talking about some really creative things with our wireless program by giving access to surrounding areas and opening up our network so that when people are onsite for us, they have access to the internet. And we can kind of, you know, we have, we have some antennas right now that really can have wide ranges around our buildings for our community use. We are about to install 137 smart boards. And again, it's something that I talked about earlier on. We want to create a common experience for our instructional staff, but more importantly, a common experience for our students. And by having a complete package, which is a smart board, projector, speakers, document camera, a new computer, will really give access to technology integration for all of our classrooms. We have embedded professional developments. We have an onsite professional developer who is available to teachers for just the basics to really adept co-teaching and going through the lesson plan and lesson design that's for technology integration. We piloted two adaptive technologies, which one is e-Spark, the other is iReady. What an adaptive technology is, is it provides students with, they go on a device, either a computer or an iPad, and it gives them an assessment to let them know where they are. And then it sends them different resources and activities based upon their level of need. As they complete them, especially with e-Spark, the students complete the task, they make a video of what they learned, they record it, it sends back to the teacher, and then they are able to get a new app which levels them up a different level. Right now, we have it piloted in three different buildings.
So is that elementary or what?
Elementary. It is, the results we've seen, this is the second year of our pilot, have been amazing as far as reducing the instructional time for some of our staff, as well as the work and the progress students have made. It's adaptive, which means that it meets the low-level needs of our kids, it meets our middle-of-the-road kids, and it meets our high-level kids. So we're truly differentiating the experience in mathematics and providing those background skills that are really necessary. iReady is a very similar program. It's more, done more in a lab, to teach it, bring their classrooms to a lab. We are rolling out a Chromebook pilot in three classrooms in our high school, three science classrooms. We are moving incredibly fast in technology, to the point where we are, have the ability to use Google for Education and Google Labs and all the collaboration software that goes along with that. We've created our own Google domain for Connect Quad, and we have been importing our Active Directory from Microsoft into our Google domain. And at a certain point, all of our students will have email addresses, all of our staff will have email addresses, will all be under the Google domain, will all have access to the collaboration tools throughout Google.
I have a question, is my Chromebook pilot, is what you're saying, you just...
Miley, can you put your microphone on?
I'm sorry. Chromebook pilot. The, we're going to see how it goes. Right now, we're going to pilot it with 340 students. So we have three science teachers who are willing to give it a try. A lot of them, a lot of our staff does use Google Already. And right now, they're doing it with using their own usernames and IDs outside of our network. For security reasons, we want to kind of control some of those things, and we want to make sure that it's done within our domain. So that's what we're working towards.
So eventually, is the plan that every kid would have one of those, like they do in, I think Sable does it too, they have the Chromebooks.
Yeah, we're not up to that yet. We have been in discussions about different things, and we're not sure how far we want to go on that.
So is it between iPad or Chromebook that most districts are...
It's more about, there has not been many one-to-one initiatives that have been rolled out that have been successful. So what has been successful is a BYOD, where you bring your own device. Most of the software platforms that we use are agnostic, meaning that you can pull it up on any device. And that's what we're, if anything, that would be our first transition, would be students would be allowed to bring their devices.
So then what do you do for those that don't have that, doesn't it create a better situation?
I have not walked around the high school, I haven't walked around the high school one time and not seen a student with a smartphone. So at any point, you know, they have access to technology. So we're going to see how that goes, but it will be part of the technology committee that we put together. Only two board members don't have smartphones, but we're working on that.
But their kids do, their kids do.
But their kids do.
My kids don't.
Well, there you go.
All right, so the last, we're going to continue the smart board installation. The goal is to complete the project over the next two years, to have it completely finalized. We have some odd spaces that we need to look at, such as art rooms, home careers rooms. In addition to that, we want to pilot, if we don't want to pilot, we want to implement e-Spark in all first-grade classrooms. It's a significant investment in technology. The goal of is to have two teachers sharing an iPad card. The program is done through fidelity, is done twice a week for about 20 minutes. And then the rest of the time, those teachers can share the iPads for whatever stations, whatever activities, whether it be Learning A to Z, Tumble Books, or any other resources that we have available that they can use for their students using those iPads. So we're excited about that.
Dean, does the e-Spark program, I know you mentioned that it, you know, the kids in the process will get them new activities. Would it also spiral backwards if the child is not succeeding? So that it will, you know, identify what their weaknesses are and then provide them with the same activity at a lower level to enhance that skill, to bring them back up to the level?
Yeah, if done with fidelity, which our team, the first year, we had a trip which, difficulty because of the timing piece of it, and working out the schedule and logistics to it. Year two was amazing, the progress kids made. Kids that teachers identified early on as having difficulty really made some significant gains. So it does spiral back, it does provide that level of playing field for them. We're going to pilot e-Spark in ELA as well. We're going to expand our Chromebook pilot to see how that works. The most important thing is we receive these Chromebooks on a grant. We want to be able to see if this is a usable device for our staff and for our students. You could get Google for Education on any device. And once you're in the, once you're using our domain and have access via our network and our usernames and passwords, they'll have access to any of that at home on any device that they use. We want to see if the Chromebook fits the needs of our students. It is limiting in certain respects because you need internet connection. So we're going to pilot it out a little bit further in different areas, different instructional areas, to see if we could, see how effective it is. Again, we'll be moving forward 100% into our Google domain, and we're really excited about that. We'll be capable of, at some point, collaborating and sharing. And the other goal, finally, is to give students access to eSchool. A lot of our students are currently logging into eSchool, the parent portal under their parent's name to find out their grades. We want to open it up to them. So in addition to them having an email account associated with our district, they will also have access to eSchool. We'll look to try to roll that out in September. So the staffing implications. Right now, we have four buildings that share math specialists. Because of that sharing, it has, it's too early in the program right now to see measurable gains. We are seeing gains in schools that have, that have more, more, the teacher there more, all right? So, but it's hard to differentiate whether it's the program, whether it's the rate of service, or anything like that. What we're asking for is an additional .1 math specialist to be shared through some of the other schools. We want to have a minimum of three days per week for service for students. Right now, we have certain schools who are getting three days per week, and other schools who are only getting two days a week. We feel that if we add an additional math specialist, it'll provide that three days of service for those smaller buildings that we have to share staff in. You saw the 137 smart boards. You saw that we are going to be completely wireless in all of our buildings. We have a tremendous initiative moving forward with technology. One of the things that we're very conscious of is not out-leveraging our technology with our support. If a teacher walks into a classroom and it doesn't turn on or it doesn't work, that could be their entire instructional focus for the day. We want to make sure that all of our machinery and all of our operating systems are up and running. And what we're finding is that we're stretching our IT staff really thin, and our need is for a networking system technician as we move forward, specifically for the high school. It's an enormous building with a tremendous amount of need, and the staffing does require it. Earlier on the presentation, I talked about literacy coaches. It's something that we're still investigating. We feel that we are able to split the funding through a grant, and that way, we'll put teachers on special assignments, so we'll use our own staff. And we'll be able to provide support additionally for our teachers in the area of literacy instruction. But again, you know, this would only move forward if it had no costs in the district.
And those two approach, will they create any particular progress?
We're very fortunate here. We have, we have a very, very skilled, knowledgeable instructional staff. We have teachers who have been literacy coaches here, who've been literacy coaches in other districts. So our skill set is very good. We could, you know, we have a tremendous amount of pick from within our own district. So we're very proud of that. And that's it. Thank you.
And if there's someone who can send the board your presentation, should you know have any more questions for you?
Thank you, Dean.
Yes.
Don't send it tomorrow.
Thank you, Dean, that was great.
Thank you.
I'd like to take a few minutes now to talk about special education. And the areas we're focused, so the conversation we'll have now is curriculum instruction with professional development. Programs across the district, it's what we're projecting at this time. We are very early in our annual review process, as well as IP compliance and part 21, how it relates to our programs and our services. So what I've done here is kind of mapping it out from last year, this year, and next year, 15, 16. Some summarizes my time here starting last year. So when we look at curriculum instruction, staff development, we really look at teachers, our school-based support team, administration, and parents. We've assessed a lot of, we've received a lot of information, and we've assessed using our observation process, our teacher needs assessment, as well as a lot of parent contact through our CSE process. We, starting last year and continuing through this year, we've been able to offer professional development with Wilson. We have about 12 teachers right now who are receiving Wilson training, which is a reading instruction. We've offered to administrators and other members of the Connect Quad community progressive discipline workshops. Our school-based support team, which would include bi-press workers, psychologists, administrators, mental health first aid workshops. And then with teachers, we've worked with transition in the IEP. So looking at our IEPs, looking at our students' performance in middle school and high school, and starting to talk about what happens after school, after 12th grade, after you're done with college, or what you'd like to see happen in college, and how we memorialize this in our IEP. We also have a series of private workshops that are monthly. We also have a series of private workshops that are monthly, they, you know, once a evening, so they actually take weeks here. And that's another way for parents to receive support when working with their children both at home and as a link to school. We're also looking at staffing. We were fortunate enough last year that the board allowed us to open some ICT sessions, integrated co-teaching sessions, at Cherokee. We also did open unexpectedly, because of enrollment, we opened an ICT session in Sycamore. We also offered, we offered an additional self-contained class at Sycamore. We've also, since last year into this year, we've evaluated our BCBA services, board-certified behavior analysts, our behavior consultants. We've been looking at this over the last year as well. What we're projecting into next year are new sections of ICT at Cherokee, self-contained sections at Sycamore. We're looking at ICT at the middle school and life skills at the middle school, and the possibility of taking board-certified behavior analysts. And rather than contracting through agencies, working as they, having them work as members of our school community. Now, when we talk about this, we talk about programs. And we've mentioned here ICT at Cherokee, special class or self-contained class at Sycamore. What we're looking to do, and what we started last year, is balance, offering balance within our school district. So, we have some special classes at Pearl. We have some special classes at Bosse. We have some special, we have some special classes sprinkled throughout the district. But when we think about least restrictive environment and we think about our needed students, we don't have a continuum on both sides of town where they can be in one building and have the opportunity to learn and grow and start in special class, transition to an ICT class, see if they need resource room. Right now, if you're in a special class, you don't necessarily have the luxury to try that ICT and transferring buildings. So, taking our needed kids and having them move from building to building offers up a new set of challenges that we're hoping to minimize. When we talk about balancing across the district, we also talk about creating an additional life skills class. Right now, we have a life skills class at OBS. We'd like to also have one at RMS. We are now transporting students from one side of town to the other side of town on a daily basis. They can be on the bus an hour each way. That's, that really is a long time, especially when you consider the needs of some of our students. In addition to that, we do have the group of students where we really need more than one class. So if we do need a second life skills class moving forward, or a special class 12-on-1, we would hope to be able to do it one in each building, minimizing the amount of travel that each student experiences and allowing them to be in their home school. Everything that we've listed here requests, uh, would, excuse me. Would we, everything we have listed here would require additional FTEs. Behavior consultants and teaching staff would be a total of seven FTEs, which will explain a little bit more how that fleshes out. I just mentioned to everyone how our continuum of services works. And how if you have a special class, the hope is if they need that special class, it always exists so that they're able to receive their education in their home school district. However, there are times when maybe they need a little less. Maybe they do have people that need to learn the general curriculum with additional special education support. That would happen in integrated co-teaching class. Sometimes that's enough, sometimes it's not enough. We, we have those special classes available also. Sometimes students do require academicship placements or residential placements. We really think about our least restrictive model and we think about balancing the district, offering that least restrictive model on both sides of town in a way that allows students not to bounce from building to building, but to have a cohesive experience close to home. So we'll start with the high school. We're not really looking at much change in the high school, possibly reducing one full-time teacher because it looks like we may only need two sections of life skills at the high school rather than three. It's early in our end review process, the students do move in and out, so I can't say for certain that it will remain at two, but we are projecting two at this time.
Can you give me an example of what happened to their life skills? Oh, sorry, can you say, give me an example of what happened to their life skills?
A life skills class focuses on functional academics. So they're not, students that aren't necessarily working towards a regent's diploma, but they're working on a set of goals so that they can live independently as possible post-high school experience. Many of them are ungraded, they have the opportunity to stay with us till 21, and they're alternately assessed, so they do not take regents. They're students who very well could live independently or really require assisted living after high school. So we really wanna give them as much of an experience where we work on functional arenas, we work on functional math, we work on life skills, so that they're able to go into the community and to function as independently as possible. So as I said, next year, just because of enrollment, it looks like we could be down one section. Looking at the middle school and talking about balance, I've listed in red some of the places where we need to fill in some of those holes. We have ICT in both middle schools, but we don't have a cohesive model right now where we have it continuously in both buildings. So to be able to offer ICT in six, seven, and eight in both schools is something that we are requesting for next year. Right now, there are certain students that we may have to give additional resource room to or an additional special class to because the ICT offering has not been available at every grade level because there wasn't always the need. Looking at the needs this year and assessing students on the early days of such a future in the end review process, it looks as if we could make those recommendations will be alright. So balancing across the district, adding that additional life skills at RMS is what we're looking at for the middle school, which would, we would talk about an increase of one to three FTEs in the middle school, depending on CSC recommendations as the school year continues. Elementary school, we're looking at, once again, trying to balance. We're looking to create special class and ICT on both sides of town, which would have Sycamore holding both classes and Cherokee holding both classes. Something else that we need to consider is that some of our special classes or some of our ICT classes are running at a high number according to New York State. They do give us a cap on what we can include in a resource room, what we can include in an ICT class, and what we can include in a special class. So if we know right now that we have a section of special class and it's a 15-1, and that we are already at 14 students and very well could be at 15 students, we try to put in a, you know, a little give-and-take there so that at the end of the year, I'm not coming too unexpectedly before, so I'll say we could need a section right now, but I'm not asking for it just yet because we don't have the numbers to support it. But we're close. So here, we're looking at creating that continuum of services from least restrictive to most restrictive on both sides of town. And then finally, as I discussed earlier, we work with board-certified behavior analysts. This is a service that is an IEP service. So when you're sitting at a committee meeting, for some reason, a student's functioning could require the, the need for analyzing the behavior, breaking it down into its smallest parts, and figuring out the best way for that student to achieve learning. You'll see that we are working right now with outside agencies. Our monthly bill is about $40,000 a month. $40,000 could be a light month. We have many months where we're over that. We're approximating that at the end of the year, we'll have spent over $400,000 in outside agencies and behavior services. So the request that we're making right now is rather than contracting with outside agencies, we'd like to hire two free behavior consultants in district. Ms. Nucci and I have sat down, we've worked out the approximate cost for a full-time employee who would be a behavior consultant considering their educational background. And we see that offering two to three behavior consultants in district could save the district approximately $150,000 a year.
Is that just salary or salary and benefits?
It's everything. That is the conclusion of special education. I don't hope there's any questions.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you, Monica. I'm sorry, thank you. I'll have more questions for you after I just...
Sure.
Just to be short, I met with the two bargaining units regarding the contract for clerical, CSC and CSEA and the CTA. The contract, the schedule, the calendar, sorry, that was recommended by both units. Is in line with the calendar that was discussed previously at one of the board meetings. It was draft C for us. It provides us with the October 11th day off. Our students, our teachers start before Labor Day. We have our Supreme House Conference Day on the 1st of September. Students will start officially on September 7. And that's in line with the OC's...
Does anyone have a copy of that schedule?
It was... You can take that.
It's the C, the C, where they have the five days. Tuesday, Friday, and Saturday. Monday for, on this day, Wednesday was on the fourth. The Tuesday, I started the day earlier, there's places that day, Tuesday, which creates a three-day period.
Yes, that was the one that...
Yes, they're gonna start before Labor Day, that's the one that makes sense.
Wait, so are you drawing every day?
There's the, they have to do the, the one day to basically move that day. So if we're gonna do that, that's what works, I mean, the sense is not worth the structure.
Any questions?
You know, after you send that firepoint presentation, I should have more questions.
Which is the calendar, yeah.
No, no, I'm good with calendar, but I'm still...
It's the process.
Okay, so we're moving over to public comment. This section of the agenda gives the board education, an opportunity to recognize persons who wish to raise a question or to make a restatement on matters including, but not limited to, agenda items. Time available will be limited to three minutes for one or more topics. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and relate to school maps. I will remind you, 30 seconds, we're gonna...
You gonna interrupt my flow and...
I'm gonna just...
Should I wait for Nick to get in? I'm so entertaining that everybody likes to...
When I do the wave, you know you have 30 seconds left on the...
Alright, there you go. Okay, so on January 12th, the January 26th meeting and then the 2/9 meeting. Most of these, I had asked on all three of those meetings, so we're talking about six weeks. The attendance policy and the appeals policy, I actually spoke to Mr. Middleman tonight, and he said that they are working on that procedure about losing a grade, a letter grade if you have extenuating circumstances for your offices, as well as the 10-day period to appeal. So, thank you for that call, both of you. On last, last month's, last week's meeting, we talked about the vacancy and you guys pretty much addressed that tonight. And I liked what I heard, I think you just missed one thing. But I have it over there, it's not a big deal, you didn't discuss it, and here's your interview. On 1/26 and 2/9, I talked about the FOIL paperwork to see if it could be fixed, to show an email option where available. While we were told on 1/26, if someone can write that in, some parents and residents do not know this. I'd like to be open and honest, and I think we should put that on there. On February 9th, I also asked when was Ted being removed from the website discussed. I haven't received an answer on that. On January 12th, 26th, and the 9th, we talked about the AP weighted averages. And I believe, Dean, you were looking into some of that and you were gonna get back to me on that?
A letter should have gone out from high school, or is going out from high school, explaining it to me.
Okay, alright. On February 9th, I talked about, uh, the, oh, I gave that to you, that was the FOIL with a tie, okay. On February 9th, I talked about the, when you comment on the public portion, you're using up the 30 minutes that you set aside for the public. Have you discussed revising this, even though I told Nick to leave that alone, as we pointed out on 2/9, 16, so that you don't use up our public 30 minutes? Uh, yeah, 30 minutes. 2/9, 1/26, and 1/12, I asked, so that's six weeks now, I asked about Linda Adams' contract and if you guys have made a decision. This has been now going on a long time. Why was Linda, alright, I'm gonna have to say that part. On 2/9, about the swim club. I asked about the current salary for the coach. I asked if ISOP was paying a part of it or an additional salary. And I also asked if there were different uniforms, and if so, who was paying for them if they're not different? I haven't gotten an answer to that. On February 9th, we talked about the Title I teachers, and Dean was looking into a solution for the children missing out on their services. So, I don't know if you're still looking into that?
We just hired a solution person, it'll be on the board agenda next meeting.
Okay, good. I don't want those kids to lose their services.
The team's second.
On January 26th and February 9th, we talked about, many times, is practice different than procedures, which is different than regulations? Where are these? Why is this a secret? Why can't I see these? Where can I see these? How can I see these? Please give me an answer, I want to view these. And then on 1/26 and 2/9, we talked about clubs. Information was asked from four of the board members, or, yeah, four at a time, about the clubs. It was some good information that they asked for, so I wanted to know if the BOE had received that information. Hasn't been reviewed, can I just finish this? Reviewed, if not, why hasn't, hasn't, hasn't it been received? And shouldn't your BOE request be followed? Did we talk about intramurals for kids that are tied? We mentioned a club for every kid. That's it. Look, I don't even have to come up to the second time, but those are all my questions.
Can you address some of those?
Wait, now if you can use up the public's 30 minutes. I want them to all have their time.
Then how do you get your answers, your questions answered?
You email me the answers.
Alright, so you get a piece of paper and I'll get your questions answered.
I absolutely give you this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll post it. I'll post it online, I'll read it online.
Tonight was slated as a public budget.
I have it at home.
There was a tremendous amount of information given out here tonight. But no one was able to ask questions at the present, while that discussion was going on. It's very difficult to go back to something that was said an hour ago, when so much has been said since then. I have a question in terms of staffing for next year. Special Ed has proposed, only proposed, hiring seven FTEs for next year. Mr. Middleman talked about hiring four additional teachers, two in literacy, a network system technician, and a math specialist.
But the network system is not a structure.
Okay, but still an additional hire. There were six new course offerings at the high school. Do we not need teachers to teach those? So, for example, our athletic trainer, who gets, I think, a stipend for being an athletic trainer, once we hire them as a teacher...
He is already on staff as an instructor as a teacher. So one of his, one of his sections in physical education will be allotted for the athletic training.
So that... No, go ahead.
Based on the enrollment decreases, we're able to offer multiple courses, as well as those courses that have no cost to the district, no additional resources.
So all of those new course offerings, we have teachers available who are currently free? How many are...
They're not currently free. But what we'll, what we usually do during the process of scheduling is, if there is not enough enrollment to run certain sections, we will close them. And, you know, these are those courses that we anticipate will be running for the 16, 17 school year. And we have been working with our high school administration with regards to staffing. And we feel that we can appropriately staff the school with the new electives.
If you have, if you have 60 kids come out for a STEM class, or if you're one of the academies, or medical, you can have 150 kids come out for a medical academy.
Right, medical academy is just in the, in the planning stages. We're not offering any courses for that. We already have courses built in, electives that are built in, that have been running and that, you know, the enrollment is robust. So we don't anticipate any additional staffing for the... Yep, we have a very detailed process. We go through a tally chart that is produced by the buildings regarding requests. So students ask for what they want. The district, the building puts that request together into a format that they send to both Mr. Nucci and I. We look at it, evaluate what things we're going to run, what things we're not gonna run based upon enrollment. And at this point, based upon the initial tallies that have been supplied to us, we feel that no additional staff is needed to run the enrollment.
Even if we have 100 kids come out with us?
We already, we already have the...
Like the athletic training?
Yep, we already have the initial run, so we, we already have an estimate of what's, what the student interest is. So we start the scheduling process now, so that when we're making... So we start the scheduling process now, so that when we're making these presentations, we have some accurate data to kind of, when we make the presentation and say that it's not gonna cost the district money, we have some, some numerical data behind it that this is important.
Is the board committed, have they committed to staying within the two percent cap for next year?
I'm sure not two percent.
I'm sorry?
What's the question?
I have a question, what is my name?
No, no.
It's significantly lower.
It's below one percent. Okay. So that's a commitment that the board has made for next year, yes. And just as a little question, Robert, I didn't hear the minutes from the February 9th meeting. Don't do the approval process tonight. Does it, you did do it? Yeah, okay, so they're all.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Deanna, and I am a graduate from Kinnipah High School, and I grew up in Oakdale, and I wanted to talk a little bit in regards to the conversation about traffic patterns that was talked about on the board meeting on February 9th. Because I live in Oakdale, I do currently take the bus as well, as most of my friends did. At that time, students that normally were driven to school, were driven to school because primarily they had to carry something large, maybe an instrument, or some kind of sporting equipment, or they were, perhaps, on their cabs or crutches, or if you just missed the bus because you had overslept. In the past, I remember my mom talking about, you know, you need to get responsibility, and you have to go to bed early, so you can get up early and get ready for the bus, get to school on time. Because of that, you know, I have learned the responsibility that I've carried throughout my career, and to this day, I'm on, I'm on time for them. I wanted to talk a little bit about the facts. The facts are that the student enrollment has decreased over the last five years by eight percent, and the teacher enrollment has also decreased over the last five years by five percent. So the traffic congestion doesn't seem to be occurring from extra students or extra teachers that have entered into the campus or school district. The traffic congestion coming into campus seems to be coming from parents that want to drive their children to school every day. So I wanted to take this time, because it seems like these parents are the same parents that are complaining that the traffic congestion is so heavy, but yet it seems that they're taking up most of the congestion. We paid over seven million dollars in taxes for transportation services, and I feel that they should really be used well. I am a, a new resident here. I love the district so much that I decided to come back and purchase a home here. I do currently live in a rezoning neighborhood, I live on Nathan, and I do have two small children that are under the age of five. I purchased this property because it's a desirable neighborhood, and I wanna thank you for thinking of us as neighbors in last week's discussion. The streets are quiet, the residents are very considerate of their properties, it's clean, there are no garbage litter anywhere around, other than, you know, maybe something that has blown out of someone's garbage bag. And it's a desirable neighborhood for new families that are coming into the school district. I can speak for myself, but I do know a couple of newer families that really look towards the Nathan Hill errand location. We pay tons of money in taxes, and as a resident, I know here that, that live on that block do not want the traffic in front of our home, and in back of our home, if we do open up the emergency exit over by here. As a new homeowner, I did purchase the property based on the fact that it was considered an emergency purpose, and I also.
Let me give you a thirty second warning.
Oh, I'm sorry. And, and I also think that by opening up the new entrance, that will decrease the value of our homes at this point. We don't want to have inexperience for bracing parents that are trying to get their kids to school there on time, as they do have two small children, they do play in the front yard. And I just would like to say that in conclusion, I hope that the board does take into effect that, you know, we shouldn't destruct a swan inter neighborhood, just because there are people that don't want to drive their children to school.
Thank you.
At this participation moment, so we don't take anybody's time, we're gonna have John Allen speak to your concerns.
Okay.
Actually, I just have a question. And I've been living in the district for fifty years, and raised five children, and of course, they didn't have to take the bus, but there was an occasion when I used to drive the child to school. That was the difference of the family. But I, I, I agree now with more, or neighbor, that I was thinking the same thing before I came, that you took a lot of research about the population and all, but I feel the same way. We've been here for years, and everybody got their children, they went to school okay, and utilizing our buses, and that we have, but we're not in the district, our big board that has, you know, the bus transportation. So I, I just, we're, we're planning on staying, my husband and I, we're in a small, we love our neighborhood, we have wonderful younger neighbors, as well as some of the neighbors that have been here for fifty years, and we just have the board, my, my husband and I, in general, we're like, we're taking into consideration, I, I still feel that kids are gonna get this wrong, mine, and our kids seem the same way. John, would you like to speak to that now, John?
Sure.
We saw five people left? We saw five people left, right?
Oh.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, okay, you guys, I'm sorry, if you all have the same questions, I mean, it's, it's relating to what everybody's saying, I figured just having come up front.
We're all related to that question, that's why we're here.
So that's why I figured I'd have John speak.
We've all lived on Nathan Drive for approximately forty-seven through fifty years.
Can you come up to the podium, sir? John, please ask the question.
Let him speak. He can't come to the podium, he's gonna come to the.
I'm asking John, I'm asking John to speak, but the, the majority of people in the room would like to have those questions answered, so instead of having everybody wait for the answers, I'd say we address it now.
When I presented last week, or two weeks ago at the board meeting, there was no recommendation from the administration.
I can't hear you, Daniel.
I'm sorry, excuse me. So, at, two weeks ago at the board, at the board meeting, there was no recommendation from administration to open up the access at Hill. That was not the intent at all. The only thing that I recommended was that the administration write a letter to the town of Islip, looking to join a partnership with them, and to create a committee for the community to, to see if there were any options to alleviate the traffic on Seventh Avenue, Sunset Street. That was it. Hill was not a comment that was made by administration. I don't know how it turned into this conversation at all. The point is, the town of Islip will not do anything without a community hearing, without community input. At this point, it was nothing more than starting a partnership with the town of Islip, and trying to create that dialogue.
Would it be reported to us if it was going to happen?
You guys come to the podium and ask a question, so everybody's in line, if everybody goes.
Where is it on the lead to? Where do you wanna?
Sir, you have to come to the podium. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't know. Yeah, you can answer your question, I apologize. Sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
The time I couldn't.
Go ahead, sir.
Well, John, you just mentioned that you're just gonna start a committee, is that what you said?
The town of Islip, I met with a representative of the town of Islip from their Safety and Traffic Commission. We are trying to find a way to alleviate the traffic in, into the high school in the morning. One of the things that came up was the idea of changing the lane markings on Seventh from Belver into the high school. That was the extent of it, in hopes that we could create a right-hand traffic and left-hand traffic going into the building, into the, into the campus, so we could alleviate the amount of traffic on Seventh and throughout the entire community. That was the only thing that's been proposed at this point.
Okay, then I'm gonna finish your sentence, if I may. It says, willing to look at the entire traffic flow throughout the community, and later said that everything is on the table, what does that mean? Opening up the gate, is that it?
The town, when, when I spoke with the town of Islip, they have said that they have received multiple complaints throughout the years regarding traffic in and out of the community, in and out of the district. I rate, I made my recommendation as to painting lane markings on Seventh. They said before they would even understand that, they would wanna hear from the community and make sure that everything was on the table. So if I, if, if it came out in that manner, that was not my intent at all, but they wanted to discuss all options with the entire community.
That's the town wants to discuss that.
Correct, and, and the district, I'm sure.
Yes.
I could be speaking out of line, but I'm sure the district wants to do that as well.
Seventh was already a two-way street, how are you gonna make a lane, what, what's that gonna mean?
You mean by lane markings, yeah.
It's a two-way street.
Nothing has been determined.
One way in, one way out.
Nothing at this point has been determined. I've met with architects, I've met with people that do traffic studies, they're looking at the width of the road, and they're trying to make determinations whether or not we have enough space to branch the traffic off as it comes into the high school with two lanes. Once again, these would be great questions.
That circle was pretty good.
These would be great questions to have when we get to the community meetings. I'm not doing anything more than making that simple presentation and asking to create a partnership with the town, that's all we're doing.
And according to the minutes of the last meeting, Nick said, well, open it up, open it up. Right? Isn't that what she said?
I did?
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's on the thing.
It's on videotape.
It's on the thing, it, it says on the video.
Open it up, you don't give a damn. Do you live there? Does any one of your board members here, do your parents live there?
My concern, sir, I'll tell you what my concern is, sir. With the problem with high school and the congestion.
What does that say?
I will tell you what my concern is. My biggest concern with looking at the situation and finding out ways to, when I use the term open it up, is my concern is if we had to evacuate that business, I have two thousand students that I need to get out of that building in a hurry, and I have no way to get them out.
That's a safety situation. That's why the gate was put in there.
Huge concern on that, that's why I think it's important we look at the whole situation.
That's why the gate was put in there, for emergency.
I'm not saying that it should be opened up for traffic.
When the emergency situation arises, you open up the gate. I lived in, I lived on Nathan Drive in nineteen seventy-two, Nicholas.
Come to the podium.
Nineteen seventy-two. According to my math, although I'm getting a little senile, it is forty-four years. That's a long time, my friend. I put a lot of money into my home, as well as a lot of people, the majority, everybody, on Nathan Hill and so on and so forth. The value of our property is gonna go down, and down you went. Before you open up that door, I'll give you my home phone number, you give me the courtesy, so I can put a rectangular post on my front lawn to try and recover some of the loss that I'm gonna impure, and if I have to sell my home after that gate is open. Not only to mention the unsafety for the kids, the grandchildren, the mess that these, that the mess that these kids just fly and throw things all over the street and don't give a g- including condoms, okay? Including condoms, alright? My neighbor here, who just so elegantly had all her facts together, just moved into the house right next to mine a year and a half ago. They spent a lot of money just doing the whole house over, because as she so said, she loves the quietness of the neighborhood, okay? People from Oakdale get on the school bus. What is the big deal?
That's what we're there for. That's what we're there for.
Seven million dollars we pay.
Why are we listening to people?
If you have a comment, you need to come to the podium.
I'll come to the podium. Why are we listening to people who refuse to put their kids on buses that we pay seven million dollars a year for? They shouldn't even be entertained, they shouldn't even be entertained.
It's not, sir. All we entertained, all we entertained was the changing of the lane markings, and we didn't entertain any of it. It was brought to us by the town of Islip. And John said we had to open it up to the community to discuss whether or not we can change the lanes to allow two right-hand lanes, so that one can go to the right-hand side of the market, one can go to the left, so we can flow the traffic into the campus quicker. That was the comment that they said, yes, open that up, so we can get next to the sun.
Like every year, we have to show up to this meeting, because there's one lady in Oakdale or Sable, wherever she is, that has a problem with putting her little Johnny on the bus because she doesn't wanna get up with him.
That would not be the reason why. I have never heard of.
She's been here a couple lines.
I still have never heard of.
I can't hear.
Can Mr. Allen speak, please?
Okay, they walk, so there wasn't any problem. My grandkids live on Kemble Drive, they can't walk to school, they don't like walking to school. I drive, it takes less than seven minutes in that traffic to get in the school. It's no big deal. Anybody that takes seven minutes, get their kid to one point, they're pointing eight, one feet, is ridiculous.
I just wanted to say, I went to Connecticut. I, I, I know Connecticut was based on traditional excellence, but I wanted to say, I, I think that we're blessed that we have our own buses, because a lot of other districts don't. Like Mr. Dean said, he said, let's hire inside staff, 'cause it's gonna be much cheaper than outside staff, like whatever the thing is, and that includes the buses, if you hire Acme or somebody else, 'cause that's another issue with the buses. We're blessed that we have our own, we're one of the top five schools on Long Island, in my opinion, because we have our names written on our buses. That's number one. Number two, I grew up here, forty years, and you are not going to turn the town into Grand Central Station. It's not gonna happen. Forget about Norman, forget about Hill Drive, the guy who designed the circle in the middle, you guys are used to spending money over. What I'm trying to tell you is, I heard through a grapevine, when you hire these contractors that build a gymnasium ten feet too small, and you cannot have basketball games in that gym and it's only for practice, spend the money over, fix the front entrance the way it's supposed to be done, with an engineer, and do not disturb the blocks around it. We, 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 I am an advocate of what I love in my town, and you are not going to ruin the town. It's not gonna be Grand Central Station. That's it. Saying, tell them to forget about it.
My name is Craig Wallace, I live on Hill Drive, thirty-seven-year resident of Connecticut Schools. I'm a upper preschooler in elementary school in the neighboring district. You got a problem on your hands, I appreciate that. The sensitivity of the people that are here tonight is only because, this is my fourth time here to speak to this issue in particular. I do appreciate our board president saying that you do have to consider and honor people's feelings in the area that surrounds the school. I take exception to the person who spoke, the parent that spoke, that said, well, it's your fault because you bought a house close to the school. Over thirty-seven years, it's been a beautiful, quiet neighborhood.
That everybody would wanna live in.
So you had to give them a piece of that.
The problem that exists, in my opinion, is due to that traffic control circle that was put in there. Until that was put in, I never remember a fifteen-minute problem that you have on your hands.
Yeah.
I would suggest to that parent that you get up a little bit earlier. I know, I believe staff have to be here by seven o'clock. If staff are late, well, then staff has to get up ten minutes early. The problem is what it is. It's too many people trying to get into an area at the same time. People have to adjust their schedules. We all have, I'm certain. I would just like to remind the former board member, or board members with longevity, as well as new people here, that when that emergency gate was put in and established on Hill Drive, we were up here, we spoke our concerns, Dr. Brogman at that time, even though he cannot guarantee to us that that would never be open, he assured us that it would only be used for emergency purposes. We had to come back here at graduation time, when the gate was open, to allow, as it was explained to us, senior citizens access to graduation and whatnot. We've accepted that, I think, we residents of Hill Drive, we appreciate that, we understand that. I am here asking you to appreciate our concerns too, in terms of utilizing that as an access route into and out of the school. It will destroy that area of the neighborhood. The berm that exists there with the big C never existed, that was an entrance and an exit, gate over on Norman Drive, where they put a berm on it. These people have a cut, now become accustomed to that area of the district being the way it is now, a nice, peaceful community. If that were to be opened up once again, it would destroy that area. You've got tough work on your hands. Mr. Allen, I, I, I feel sorry for you. But that's, that's what you do. So please, get input from the surrounding areas, please consider that circle out there, or redesign of it in some fashion. If you open that up, you're gonna have to increase security down there, you might as well consider that when you, if you can address and redesign the front here. And I just want my piece of mind, I do appreciate it.
I just wanna say, that there was.
I just wanna say that there was no conversation, no intent, nothing ever was
Turn your microphone off.
About any street other than 7th. When Mr. Allen spoke to us, there was discussion with the town, just about 7th, not about Hill. No more the street. No, 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 the street was involved. And, and Mr. Allen said if something about the street was involved, we would've known. And so it was kind of a surprise to hear you have so many notes today sent home. We were all a little surprised because there was no, absolutely no discussion. And I know I couldn't be more than happy before, but I'm telling you right now, all honesty, no discussion, just 7th. I understand that, but I'm trying to leave it here by saying there was no discussion. We spoke about it, Mr. Allen spoke to the town, and then talking about 7th Street, we didn't talk about any other street. And now, you know, if they were talking about those streets, they would go to you. It wouldn't be us, they would go to you. And you would then express this anger or frustration. But I'm telling you now, you will go home, be surprised, at this board is not doing anything to destroy anyone in the community. We're working on 7th Street to see if there's a better way that we can handle the traffic. So really, I don't, I really don't want anyone to have to worry because there hasn't been any more discussion on this topic.
Can we go around the board and see how each individual feels about this issue right now?
You can't call the board, but I can tell you, as having an 11th grader, who once in a blue moon wakes up late, and I, I live in Sable and I have to come all the way down, I'm not so happy to take the 10, 15-minute drive. But however, I will drop them all three blocks away, say, "Good luck, honey, you're on your own."
Well, come here. Excuse me, when my kids were going, ah, of course, sorry. When my kids were going to school, the majority of the people, the parents that are here, you know, they were, you didn't automatically, just because you had a driver's license, being able to walk, drive into the high school. You'd need a permit. Who are in the school, there'd still be 16-year-old kids who was the board running the school.
You still need, you still need a permit to get in.
I think Ms. Kennedy said it all. There was no discussion about opening up that entrance. I walk your neighborhood all the time, I love those streets. It's a beautiful neighborhood, and none of us would like to see that entrance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question for Mr. Allen. You said that there was gonna be a community meeting?
One of the things that someone must have said, before they would endorse anything, before they would propose anything, was that we would all have to come together as an administration, the town, and the community.
How would we be notified of the meeting and what?
We will, we will do everything we have to, whether it's putting on the website, doing the mobile call, we will, we will make sure all the communities will be all, all of them, not without.
I was gonna say a couple others, just one minor thing coming back from what I like, it's quite a while ago. I think one of the easiest fixes that we can go about it, the driving system, is a single out, which everybody coming in to go around to the right side of the high school, move back around the back of the building and come back out this side, and nobody would have to deal with the traffic. So that's something we had discussed a few years back. Probably the most straightforward fix without having to deal with the traffic pattern, but everybody pushes right, everybody comes back out this way simply by going behind back of the wall.
But I think you're putting a circle, it would be better.
Right, but you wouldn't even have to deal with the circle if you didn't.
Alright, I'm just changing to somebody for one second. I don't know if anybody lives on Delvo or Aaron, but they seem to empty the garbage cans between 4:00 and 5:00 and 5:30 in the morning. Have you ever heard it dumpster be emptied at 4:30 in the morning?
My house, 6 o'clock.
Rocks the world. And I've complained numerous times, and it's been for like a month, two months, and then it starts again, all the time. The high school's garbage cans, they're fouling around 4:00 and 5:00, you wouldn't believe it, that sounds like a fine thing. Another one, I don't know if anybody lives there, but.
You're the last speaker.
Thank you very much. I apologize, I, a few items, and you can ask them as we go along with the course and I'll be right back. In policy 821, I noticed there was an option to include something along the lines of the superintendent knows who is, I guess, certified or Narcan. What was the reasoning of deleting that? We're not keeping it in, we're not putting it in the policy? I know you took it from the sample, I was just wondering the reasoning of it. The superintendent has a list of who is certified to the drug, the Narcan. It looked like it was an optional statement that could be added from the, from the, I guess, sample that you took. And I just didn't know the reasoning of why the superintendent wouldn't have a list of everybody that was certified.
I think it was because of the fluidity of having that list current, that we didn't list them specifically in the policy to who is trained, but to have that list on file, because it changes, it changes you, you know, with who's trained and who's not trained.
Okay, I agree with that.
I believe that was the part, I'm trying to find the statement, but I believe that was the part.
I can't, I can't.
No, I'm just trying to bring it up in the.
Well, it just says to keep a current list, so the policy wouldn't change. It's just every two months as a procedure, it would get updated or something. I don't know, I didn't think it was a bad line to delete. That's what I'm saying.
Well, the last one that says the superintendent shall receive a list of trained responders and this, but well, she already has the list. That's why it was an optional sentence, but she, whatever, has that list and is keeping it.
Can you speak louder, please, so I can't, I can't even hear.
Can the audience just please be mindful, the person that's speaking, please, thank you, for sharing with regard to the capital reserve funds. How does the integration between the bond and the reserve fund work? Like, what, I kind of was under the impression that if you had the money, you didn't need to have a bond to get the money. So how do they integrate with each other?
You have a reserve for part of the money, and the remainder of the money is bonded out and borrowed.
Would that be an additional cost to taxpayers at that point?
No, we try to keep the debt level constant, and we'd be funding the reserve through any surplus that might exist at your end. We're so numb.
Okay. And what reserves funds do we have now, and what are they for? Do we only have one?
No, we have several reserves.
Okay, and we don't have a capital reserve?
We do not have a capital reserve, no.
Or did it run out? Did we have one at one time?
We had, and it was used for this bond. We had one for the bond before that, for the capital project, I should say, before that. That's how we typically worked our capital projects.
And it's been zero because the money's already been there.
It's almost like a down payment in conjunction with a mortgage to fund the purchase of a house. This is a down payment, a savings, in conjunction with a borrowing, a bond instead of mortgage, to fund a much larger project.
Okay, so did it expire after the term, or did it run out of money?
We, we still have debt service on existing bonds that are still operational. They taper off as years go, go on, just like a mortgage would.
Okay.
But, but it's used for that purpose of that capital project. So when we're talking about establishing a reserve for several years from now, that would be for a capital project for new capital improvements throughout the construction.
Okay. And Ms. Vanzey, Mrs., I'm sorry. Just so you know, there was a life skills class at RMS about three years ago. So I didn't know if you were aware of the history of that. So I'm glad to hear that it's coming back. And Mr. Dean, Mr. Mittelman.
Mr. Dean?
Robotics class versus robotics club, what's the difference?
Good question.
Or are they making separate robots?
Making separate robots.
Good question.
Are they doing separate projects?
Are they in the same competition?
No, not to my knowledge, but I'll find that information out.
They are not.
Which robotics are those? The first Vex?
They're, they're not in the first robotics team.
Are they Vex then? Do we know which team they are?
So do we know which team they are, because?
Thank you.
I will get all that, I'll get all that information for you.
Good question, Terry.
Robotics club has participated first for the last four or five years.
Forty, forty-ish, no, I don't know how many students, but it's a lot.
Right.
In the club.
The one machine.
They generally build two, because one, they have to pack up that goes to competition, and the other one they play with and modify, and then when they get to competition on the competition day, they can modify the robot provided it stays within the guidelines. So generally, they do build two. Sometimes, as teams get older, they actually build three or four because they have more and more chassis. So part of the entry fee gives you a single chassis. So after multiple years being in competition, you have more parts, so you can build more robots. We were looking into Vex for the robotics program, the class. I'm not really sure what they wound up with because we allowed the teacher the brain to figure out which one he wanted to do. I'm not sure they're actually going to compete this year, but they're, those kids.
The competitions for Vex are almost over.
They also, there's a competition, an etiquette that happened later in the year. There's a lot of different venues to do that in, and I'm seeing Miss Farina raising her hand, I don't know.
My, my son's in the robotics class. The class is a half-year course.
Half-year?
Yes, and it just teaches the children about robotics. He's also on the team. And from what I understand, they're almost done with the robot.
Yeah, I heard that.
They have to be done by a certain time. I think they're only building one one. Unless they plan on doing another.
And they may build the second one as an, because the competition's not reached.
Right, it's not the legal process.
But the program, you have to say, because you're not having two different programmers. Also, with regard to the Board of Ed vacancy, I'm not sure if this is, I haven't looked into it yet, but if, in an election at large, when, for instance, if the last.
I didn't do it. Oh, Terry, they don't like you, apparently.
Gosh. Oh, in an election at large, the two seats, there was five candidates. I don't know if there's some way for possibly the candidate that didn't get chosen for the seats to be almost an alternate, so that if we have this situation.
So if my take off, nobody pulls my seat, if I take over, it's a good absence.
But it would be probably a good indication of, Narcan, no, 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 no. You guys appoint a Board of Ed representative. I'm asking, on your understanding, taking into account that, that this community has representatives that have been on the Board of Ed, and they've gotten support from the community. So I'd just like you to take that into consideration as you undergo the course and those. Also, I have one other, okay, good, I have one other item. I, with the help of Eileen Hapo, we're putting together a petition to move the Board of Ed seat from 5 to 7. I read the notice documentation, and I get a count of, how many motors did you have last year? I had 133 signs to move number of orders from last year.
I do believe it's 135 that are required.
I saw that, but I.
It's 5% of the previous year's.
26, 48.
Yeah, it's 5%.
I get 133. Just don't think it will trust on that? Two, two isn't gonna make a difference.
It's always a good idea to go over the amount, just in case there are.
I know, I think there's two tonight. I will have, I will have one, I think.
Do you have a question for me?
You have a question for me? Why, of course, if I'm allowed to answer anything I can.
Why?
Why?
Why 5 to 7?
I think that you guys have, I volunteered in a lot of organizations, a lot, and volunteering is not an easy job. I've been from support staff, I've been treasurer on a couple of, I'm not gonna name the stuff that I am, in different aspects. I think volunteering for the Board of Ed is probably the hardest volunteer job. Okay? I think having 7th in place of 5 would be able to spread first knowledge and second, the word, she's got my list of talking points of why, and be able, it, it'll spread the workload pretty much. I think it's a lot.
And in a district this size.
And with, in a district this size, you go ahead and you look at
I don't have that paper, sorry.
Some of the numbers, I, I actually have a CI 3 Village, Patrick Medford Bowl has 7 Board of Ed members, their students are about the same as ours. Let's see, Comac only has like 3,700 students with a 185,000, million-dollar budget, but only 5 Board of Eds. And Northport has about the same number of students with a budget of about 160, and they have 9. So that's what I'm looking at. Who else has 5 with our students? Nobody. That's why.
Well, what happens?
No, but it's a lot of work, and it's a job that I'm actually considering running for one day, and I'd like to see. Let's share a thought.
Any, any resident can bring a resident.
No, no, I'm not against it, I'm just curious as to what the, what the thought process is. My biggest concern with it is.
If you want, what I'll do is I have this, well, this is on the back of the form, I can give you that, and I have a copy of this. Actually, you know what? I'll email it to Andrea, I'll.
Charlie, can I ask a question? Once you submit that, and once it's included, they prove you may, when do you hire these?
The election is in September.
The election ends.
Oh, it's September. You have, you have between 30 and 60 days to, to raise special elections to be held after the end of the meeting, in proportion of your group's drawing.
So it's not gonna be for the following year.
Yes, it will.
Yes, for the following year.
I, I did not know what it was gonna be.
We don't want a special election.
And I worried was, I didn't know how it was gonna be.
Do we have a choice? Has to be a special election? So you, so you have to.
I don't want a special election, we don't want to cost the district money. We do not want to cost the district money.
And no choice.
You may not have a choice.
Consider that. All, all I'm asking here is that, and I have no problem with going at.
I wasn't aware of that.
When you put out the points, put out all sides of it, that's all, that's all I'm asking.
I have a question also, Terry. Have you gone around to any other boards and asked them who have 7 or 9 members?
Yes.
What their feeling is?
Yes.
I have, and every one of them always says, "I wish we liked Connect One, we had 5." Yes, every single one of them that I've talked to, and that's what I always liked about Connect One. I always, you know, wow, they only have 5, that's great. The other board members that I talk to in other districts, they always say, "Wish we had 5 by Connect One."
My other concern is having 7, you open up opportunities for more positions than you truly don't, I find, in some cases, you truly don't get candidates who really want to run because it thins out the competition. And occasionally, sometimes you have people who just walk on because there's 3 seats available and only 3 people apply.
Well, I don't know.
There is no choice for the community to actually vote.
Here's my big picture. When last year I put in the petition for at-large, you know why I put in for at-large? To kind of get to this point, because I do feel that with an at-large election and not having, I don't know who's running, but I'm gonna run for 6th.
I agree with you 100%.
You know, it's like, you gotta choose who you're gonna run against before you even know who's running. Before you even just jump in. So I think it'll be a.
I think we should, let's see, I think we should see how that works for a couple of years, see how that goes. Just my opinion, before we start changing.
I like the idea that we ask.
I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna make.
You said it's gonna be probably more than 25,000 now.
Well, first of all, I didn't, I was under the impression that.
That's irrelevant.
I actually have.
No, you can put forth whatever else is needed, if the people want.
Andrew, can you, can you, can you forward me the information on if the seats are increased, what's the options for getting those seats filled?
There is no options.
Can you forward that to me?
What is that? Where is that law? Where can I find it?
It's in school education law. I mean, I could just give you the section, I could just copy.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.
I just, a quick question.
Come to the podium, come to the podium.
The kick in the ass.
When, she, you said the election would have to be in September. When would those two people take office?
Immediately.
Immediately.
On the election.
And so when would they be up?
With a three-year term.
A three-year term.
So then you'd have, always have the special elections?
No, they would be up at the end, they would be up in the same time, they'd, they'd come back in three years in May.
So it'll be a little less than three years. So then you would have four board members turning over on time.
No, three.
No, four, because next year is two.
Right, but, but that doesn't matter.
It'll be with the one-year person.
Right.
With, this year is one, see, it'll.
The one-year person leaves.
No, she's right.
No, it'll be with this one-year person.
Two, two, one, and then two again.
And then what we're looking for the next cycle.
It'll always be like, because it's stagnated.
But you'll, but what you'll do is, you know, going out 4 years and it's.
It would be 3-2-2.
Miss, Miss got it right. 3-2-2.
It would be one with the one.
If you're doing it as a special education.
It would be 3-2-2.
Three.
So that's why I was just, just.
No, no, three, two.
No, they would be added with the current one this year. So all, the, the, this one and the new two in the election would be in three years from now, for election, as a three.
So it's three, three, two, two.
Three, two, two.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so I wish I did this last year.
All right, we had discussion.
No, makes sense.
Then how do you do this without having a special election and your seats?
You can't, you can't.
So that the only.
Why, why can't you?
That's the way the law is set up.
I don't believe that's correct.
Well, we'll take a look at it, sorry, so you.
Yeah.
There is no way, we've already checked with the attorneys.
What's needed?
That's the law.
That's the law.
Man, we're talking fast, this place.
Okay, we're going to consent agenda, need a motion for items two, two, six. Need a motion?
Motion.
Okay, uh, revised board of education, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, meeting schedule, capital reserve fund proposition, stipulation settlement, legal notice for annual meeting, twenty two, thousand and sixteen, and a special education services letter of agreement.
Miley, turn your, turn your speaker on.
We don't have it, it's.
Lee, any questions?
No, that's fine.
Nick? Nothing.
Why's it wrong?
Oh, we had to change the board's election. Okay, all in favor?
All right.
All right, moving on to. All right, motion of the board of education to move an executive session.
Wait, Miley, there's something I wanna say. When we were discussing about the entry at the high.
There was, we, I know there was a parent that came up and mentioned about the backside entrance and I clearly stated that we weren't going to use that.
When we entertain that, that was only a consideration for Seventh Avenue. That's how you brought it up, correct?
Yes, yes.
The town was brought in to consider that and that only. So it's unfortunate that there were comments made that this is what's on the table now, which implies that the town or someone else may bring up other options.
Sure, but it, and it'll be in an open conversation, in an open forum, and at any point, the board has the ability to say, that's not an option that we're, we're considering, it's not an option that we wanna deal with.
So it is open to other options that the town may bring up, or was the town brought in only to look at that?
The town was brought in for that specific purpose, but when I spoke with the safety and tra- uh, traffic, um, director, he said that no matter what, that a committee would need to be formed so they could get public input and at that point, they would hear what everybody else has to say and therefore anything would be.
I, I was under the impression they would hear what was said from the Seventh Avenue residents in that area. Not that they would broaden the scope of this idea, which was only to improve, to make better the Seventh Avenue entrance.
And, and I would agree that that is the way that it was, that I presented it to the town, to the representative that I spoke to. I spoke of no point of opening up any of the side streets at all. My only concern was to look at the possibility of, of making adjustments to that traffic circle and possibly lane markings.
I think you were very clear in your presentation.
That was my only, those are my only concerns and my approach to the town. And the reason why we need the town's support is because if we do any kind of changes to the lane markings, it's in their, it's to their, their street.
Has this repped into a different scope that is now somehow governed by the town to consider other options?
We have done, from what I understand, we have sent a letter to the town asking for a partnership so that we could start the discussion. It's going to, from my perspective, it is in the focus only on that Seventh Avenue entrance and only on the area from Belver into the, into the, uh, into the campus. When they start bringing up other options, I'm sure they're gonna be able to refer back to their records and their history of community concerns and complaints.
And who will control the outcome of that?
Well, I, I've not been through this process, so I couldn't tell you.
Well, I'm gonna pipe in too, because the truth is that there are no roads on the back of our property. We cannot open up those, those roads right now or ever at this moment because we have an access path. We do not have a legal road back there. There was a bond ten years ago that was floated to build a road back there. We don't even have the appropriate footing or asphalt or width for a road to be considered. So it would be such an unbelievable cost to the taxpayer, we would have to go out for a bond, we would have to ask you for the, to, for the funding for it. It, it's not even a possibility because all we have in the back of, of the school is an access path. So you know what, the, the anger and the angst, and I feel so bad that there was anger and angst because the truth is that we are just looking to make Seventh Avenue flow better for all residents and all the community. It has nothing to do with opening up the avenue entrances because we don't have legal roads.
I wish you would've said that, then they were all here.
I was very, I mean, that's, it was very clear on the video that he only proposed on Seventh.
We wanted to check on Seven, there's, we don't have legal roads back there. If we wanted to open that avenue, we'd have to, we'd have to spend so much money.
That's why you need a room, Miss Board, again.
We, we, so I don't know if you had the opportunity, look at the video, the back, a parent had brought up the backside entrance.
You need a room, Miss Board.
At no point did the board event bring that up. John elevated a presentation of opening up a side gate so there'll be two lanes coming into the high school, one leaving. That was the only discussion that's on the table for us to, uh, even think about or entertain. But that is it, nothing else.
I, I haven't watched the video, but I'm assuming my comment of opening up meant what John was referring to, the three lanes, so that we can have more access to those two lanes, I think it was taken out of context.
I watched it last night.
That I meant open up the campus, I didn't mean open up the campus.
And I watched it tonight, that's exactly the context they said it in.
My only concern is about the safety of the children and I have a bigger concern with evacuation than actually getting people advised. My concern.
That's why you got the emergency road.
Oh, the access gap, that's what that's for, the runway gap.
Right, yes, and even if that is a concern because it's not really, it's not really a road. That is my big concern, I, I, I was only referring, when I said open up was what John was talking about because it's the only thing we discussed was the two lanes going in, if we can make it a little bit easier access to have one going right and one more left, it makes sense. But it wasn't affecting any change other than lane markings in the road.
There's no need for that angst.
Well, for them to do that, they probably might have to take the sidewalks off.
Well, we haven't gotten that far, maybe we're gonna measure first and last.
Not at all, actually not at all, it doesn't change, it doesn't change the width of the road at all.
And I don't believe it did. I believe the discussion was with the width that existed and no, it was literally just lane markings was the discussion we had. Literally lane markings, that was it.
They're literally changing the double yellow line, moving it over a little bit, this way children could, so teachers would go, teachers and staff would go to the left, kids would go to the right. Do you really think, I mean, do you really think it's any worse than it ever was? Is it really any worse than it ever was?
Parents are driving, they're going to school, they're like, that's the best.
I don't know.
That's only a forty-five minute problem and less because from four to seven, four, four to seven, anybody who went that school, they're not a problem. A quarter after seven, they can't, go in that school without a problem. It's only that here for now and everybody's humming together, no matter whether it's a two-way or a, you're all in school need at that time.
And that's why we're trying to alleviate as much as we can without changing anything, just possibly flowing the traffic a little bit better.
I'm thinking if everybody was someone that has to get on the LIT in the morning and say, get to Huntington. Well, you know you're not gonna get to Huntington in thirty minutes at six-thirty in the morning, you know what I'm saying? So you have to leave, you gotta allow that time. It's the same thing, you know, most like our, our young neighbor said before, you just, uh, get up earlier and you have to be responsible. And get in there, you know what's ahead of you.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
I can tell you, other parents and I drive there, my son, I hate to say it, is waiting, not as often as I like, I mean, as often as, whatever.
Yeah.
And myself and other parents, we do the same things, three blocks, two blocks, we drop our kid, we make the U-turn and we leave. So I don't know necessarily all that's parent trap because I do see parents dropping their kids off. They're not even anywhere near, like I said, two, three blocks from the school. So it's now the parents waiting to get into that school.
The kids can walk from Kenwood Drive into that school faster than parking though, I, I agree with that a hundred percent. So I do drive my, my train to school, I mean, okay? But it only takes from Kenwood Drive into the school and that's where everybody merges because they're from three different ways. They have that seven, they come down Sunrise Drive, they go down, uh, they, um, they'll look, they'll look drive, they all come in different routes. And we see kids come to Sunrise, they come down into Hill, we go on Nathan's and Harry's and then they bring up Sunrise and go, um, Kenwood to Seven. So I mean, they go on all different ways.
All right, I got school beans, I, I get the.
Oh, boy.
About six or seven years ago, and I, people aren't playing the blues traffic service, six or seven years ago, there was a decision to allow juniors because they were flooding the neighborhood parking to allow them to park on school grounds. If they had their senior license. That has added approximately two fifty, two hundred and fifty, three hundred cars.
In the spring, mostly.
Well, it starts depending upon when their birthday is. We get calls every single day and I tell you, they walk in on their seventeenth birthday with their application, that's where they go. So the big influx, obviously our parents drive, but the big influx has a lot to do with the junior parking, that was to alleviate. There were parents on the surrounding streets, uh, residents who were infuriated and looked rightly, rightly so. If, you know, the driveways were blocked, they were caught for two or three blocks. So they have this decision, bring them on as long as they will leave. Everybody that pops on there is leaving before we call the police. They're all, they're all juniors and they're legal. We have five hundred and something cars, forty-five buses, walkers that walk through the Jones and within a twenty-five minute period. That's the reality, but when the juniors came in about five or six years ago, that's what exacerbated the problem. And it will, it will get worse between now and the end of the year. It was said to the community, I appreciate tremendously graduation day and letting us use that. Listen, I don't wanna use that gate except for an emergency, if that, if being you, I'm having a bad day. So, uh, from my point of view, there's no reason, that's, that's the bottom line. John's looking at it, maybe it'll work out, but Nathaniel Hill is not feasible, as the superintendent said, it was almost five, Lee knows, it was almost five hundred and sixty thousand dollars just to get to Act Court. It would cost one point five and more to get us, and I tell you, the athletes in this community, we don't want traffic going, you know, going through our fields out there. It's not, you know, I would, it's not gonna fly. So it was, it's not feasible, it's an evacuation gate, that's what it is, safety and we're always looking to do better, so the discussion will start. That's, that's.
Thank you, Don.
What question? It's a forty-foot board.
No, quickly, you only had one conference session tonight. Yes, has that been a change to what we did or is that just for the.
Just, just. On the planning meeting, just a possible.
So there's only one?
The planning meeting's always been one. Are we attend to?
Always had two.
Yeah, I think it's always been two, but now that you've voted on the consent agenda, I'd like to just ask one question about. I'm not sure that, um, the annual notice that goes out to the public that's published in Suffolk County News and Long Island Business News, you're not, I don't believe that the board is sufficiently notifying the community and I've brought this up before. Long Island Business News is a business publication, it's for businesses and only businesses subscribe to it.
Because it's expensive.
It's, it's over a hundred dollars a year and it's only businesses, people, residents do not subscribe to that. And Suffolk County News is a newspaper that's only available on the South End, only in two stores that I'm aware of. So nobody other than people that live right off of Sunrise Highway have access to that newspaper. So I'm not sure that publishing the annual meeting notice in either of those locations qualifies for sufficiently notifying the community. So I, I'm just bringing that up.
Thank you, Gil.
Thank you.
Okay, motion of the board of education to move into executive session in accordance with the open meetings law, section one oh five D, to discuss a proposed special education litigation, would it buy that according to history of particular person or persons confidential and exempt under open meetings law to discuss issues involving special education students? I need a motion to move into an executive session, second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, taking a five-second recess, not a yes.
Thank you, we're coming.
You could have three lanes, eleven foot wide.
Why, why would it?